Let's pray. Our Father, who art in heaven, hallowed be thy name. Thy kingdom come, thy will be done, on earth as it is in heaven. Give us this day our daily bread, and forgive us our trespasses, as we fear those who trespass against us. And lead us not into temptation, but deliver us from evil. The vine is the kingdom, hallowed be the word, ever and ever. My Father, tonight, as we stand, Father, as your citizens and as your representatives of this city, Father, we ask for your wisdom, knowledge, and your understanding to make the right decisions on behalf of our city. We ask that your hand will continue to guide us. And Father, as we've already asked, we want your kingdom to come so that your will will be done. For, Father, when your will is done in our city, we know that we have a blessed city, blessed citizenry, and, Father, just blessings all around. So, continue to watch over us, and, Father, give us a heart to just walk in the right ways and do the right things, make the right decisions, our city and our citizenry. We ask this in the name of your son Jesus. Amen.
Only agenda amendment, just to add, Mr. Bob, you said, to give a brief presentation?
Yes.
Okay.
Just not even a presentation.
All right, just update, okay. All right, anybody else have any other Orion planning?
Bob. Comprehensive.
Yes, oh. Um, okay, anybody have anything else to, okay? All right, um, we'll go ahead and start. You can come for us, Bob.
Uh, well, thank you, Council and Mayor. Good evening, Bob Barber with Orion Planning Design. Uh, have two of our partners with us tonight, Allison Mount, uh, Missoula, Montana, and, uh, Bert Kirkendall, right here, uh, Chattanooga. And then, uh, I, of course, am from up in the north part of the state. You've engaged us, as you know, to facilitate your comprehensive planning process, and we are deep into the process. Uh, you may recall, uh, we spent, uh, time in Bay St. Louis in March, in some intensive, uh, focus groups and discovery sessions, public meeting. Uh, we have since been working, we're in now, in a phase of the process, uh, that we, it's kind of a combination of finishing up, gathering the direction we're headed, and actually designing components for the future of Bay St. Louis, uh, for the comprehensive plan, and we're here all week doing that. We're based up in the Port Street Community Center, up in the top there, that's a, we like that facility. Um, and, uh, we had a public meeting last night, uh, was, uh, well attended. Wasn't attended as, as, uh, robustly as the first one, but it was a significant attendance. We had great inputs. What we are doing is, is actually laying the, the, the framework for Bay St. Louis twenty forty-five comprehensive plan. And our, uh, other three team members are not with us. We have, uh, an economist, uh, and our, our planner, and, uh, other partner who's urban designer, Oliver Seabolt. And then we have a couple of people that are working remotely with us. Uh, so, they're actually working right now. Um, all this is building to a presentation, public meeting Thursday evening, um, at the, um,
Community Center.
Community Center in the, in the Depot District there, uh, at five thirty. And we, if, I guess we're being streamed, are we being streamed? So whoever i- is available to hear that information, we have publicized it, you have publicized it. What we will present is, again, a framework, not a finished product, but it is a substantial, uh, milestone in where we're headed. We'll look, be looking at the city as a whole, how it's developing. And we have four selected focal areas that illustrate some key points, uh, about the future of Bay St. Louis. And by the way, what we're doing is driven by the inputs that we, we, I mean, we're contributing our expertise, but we always take pains to emphasize, we are responding to, uh, inputs that we have gathered along the way. And those inputs number up into the multiple thousands now, between community survey, website interaction, participation of focus group, the advisory group, et cetera. So, uh, uh, we want you to be confident that what you are seeing, while it won't be perfect and you're refining it, it'll ultimately be before you for final comment and approval. Uh, what, the, the substance of what is coming is a response to Bay St. Louis. And I'll close with this, I know you don't want me to belabor the point. Yes, sir?
Uh, you said that's Thursday the twenty-seventh of?
Set second, this, uh, two nights from tonight.
This Thursday?
Yeah. I apologize if I misspoke. Let me be clear on it, twenty-second.
All right.
Yes, sir. Uh, Bay St. Louis, I mean, your tagline says it, it's a place apart. It, it, the dynamics in Bay St. Louis are wholly unique to the Gulf Coast. We're discovering that, um, it, it's, it's incredibly interesting to think about its future and all the, the various, um, uh, dynamics that are at play in the community, from preserving the, uh, the core neighborhoods to working in your sensitive environment, natural environment, to the, to the tourism component now that's very, very present, uh, presents a uniqueness that is, uh, is wholly Bay St. Louis for sure. So, without belaboring it, I'll answer questions. Uh, it's not a lot I can say in five minutes, if I hadn't gone over five minutes already. Uh, but we, we, um, w- we, we urge, uh, the, ma- make known the meeting Thursday night, five-thirty.
Yes.
Uh, and hope for a good turnout there.
Yes, sir. Any questions?
Thoughts, questions?
I thought the meeting was good last night, a lot of good information, and I think you're right. It's, we're trying to coexist with the tourism, the, the full-time residents, the weekenders. You know, we got a lot going on that they all got to coexist, and everybody's got to be happy and have a quality of life. So it's a lot to, lot to look at.
That's, that's, uh, quite well stated, and that's a message that we here clear.
Yes.
Yeah.
Yes, sir.
Thank y'all.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Bob. Announcement is the same thing, comprehensive plan meeting on the twenty-second at five-thirty, Bay St. Louis Community Center. No more guests, mayor's report, uh, motion to adopt ordinance number six-six-zero dash zero-six, twenty-twenty-three, in ordinance of the mayor and city council of the Bay St. Louis City adopting salary schedule, establishing salary compensation for officers, employees, and open positions of the city of Bay St. Louis, which amends previous ordinance number six-five-nine-zero-nine, twenty-twenty-two.
And, and all this is just an update, all this is just an update of everyone we have. You know, everything's been approved as we go along as far as offices pay and everything, you know, the increase is there. You know, so it's just an updated one for who we have as of this moment.
Motion, Mr. Seal? Do I have a second?
Sure.
Second, Mr. Reed? Yeah, and it stated that some of this is because we gave some longevity pay raises or anything like that, so, thanks for the email.
It gives us a tee-up going into budget.
Right.
Yes. Okay, all right, uh, any more discussion? Any further discussion? Vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, passes five-zero, thank you. Anything else, Mayor?
That's it, thank you.
Council business, first thing up, SORF loan forgiveness, Mr. Doug?
They'd, they'd send an email out on that, stating that they're in the process of doing it. Um, I think facility plan is what we like and to be, um, submitted or completed some, however it helps. Yeah, however, whatever the full mality is on that.
Been working on that anyway, haven't you?
Yeah, so, um, we are in line for potentially a hundred percent forgiveness on that project. Um, the deficiencies that were noted were IGR letters, intergovernmental review letters, basically an environmental review. They have to be submitted by August thirtieth, I think. Uh, along those lines, it has to advertise for public comment, uh, which it's currently advertising. And we have a meeting on the twenty-seventh of July. Um, so, once we have that and the letters that get submitted with the per, with the loan application, facilities plan can come afterwards, once it's finalized. Um, but the defici, the main deficiencies that we needed to address were the IGR letters and that, uh, advertising for the comments. Which, everything's been submitted, requesting those letters.
That was cool, okay.
I think you, in case you might have touched, one of the things, no matter what, I think we get a forgiveness of?
Fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent, no matter, we, we will qualify for that, it sounds like.
Eighty-nine thousand or something.
About one thousand.
Yep, one thousand, three-nine, yep.
And just comment, again, it does come back to the council. So, yeah, whatever happens, if we find, it's a yes, it's a no, everything comes back to y'all. To either move forward, don't move forward. I think it's a no-brainer at least to pursue.
Yeah.
Once they do their final ranking and we get the loan documents, we'll know what the forgiveness is, and then that comes back to the council for final decision.
Good, good, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Doug, for bringing that to us.
Yeah, that's.
Send me the training to learn something.
That could be huge, that was worth the training.
Yeah.
Um, any new business, Mr. No Block?
No, I don't have anything.
Anything, anything, Mr. Seal?
Um, let me look through my list. Yeah, we talked about copper. So, streetlights, um, now we got forty of them out now, it seems like people are taking them out, right? Um, have we looked into legalities of trying to?
Yes.
Something?
Um.
How do we do this?
I think MML, they got that passed last year where we can go after that tax, is that correct, or something through state? Yeah, to recoup that.
The answer is that apparently nobody that hits these things have insurance.
Very few.
So then you just really have to make a business decision as to how much money you want to spend going after something. There's a really good chance you're never going to collect. Um, so that's, but any of them, to my knowledge, any of them that, that they take out that we know who the insurance, Jamie files it with the insurance and we collect on those, the problem becomes, sadly, the majority of the people that hit these things don't seem, or some of them are hitting runs. A lot of them are hitting runs that you never know. And then, like, I know one of them recently on the highway was an uninsured motorist.
Yeah, I guess it's beyond all pay grade, but when do you think our state will step up to do better with mandatory insurance, taking tags like Louisiana and enforcement? Because I just knew my commercial insurance was four thousand dollars, paid people that don't have insurance that hit me.
Right. That's something that needs to be addressed when you talk to your, your legislators and your state officials, because, you know, the other thing is minimums too, because I think the minimum requirement is twenty-five grand.
You can't buy nothing for twenty-five thousand.
Nowadays, you can't even buy a good used car for that.
Mm-hmm.
So, that's, that's another problem that we, we have, is that people are getting in accidents and the twenty-five thousand, and they're having to still hit their uninsured motors because the, the, the minimums aren't anywhere near, which also could come into place here. I mean, if they hit somebody and then hit one of our poles, you know, that twenty-five thousand's eating up pretty fast.
Doug, with that though, Ronnie's putting together a package now with Mississippi Power, um, uh, Mississippi Power, and he's also called.
Webster Electric.
Nah, it's not Webster, um, what's the one? Mississippi Power usually calls him, um, damn, what's the name of, it's not Webster.
Pike MDR?
It starts with a W.
Yeah. Weaver.
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 Weaver. He, he's contacting some of them, he might be contacting Webster as well, but I know he's contacting Weaver.
Mississippi Power, they did all the bridge work.
Yeah.
Bridge lights.
Yeah.
Um, community policing, so, uh, I, we saw that, um, it looked like we're, police department's doing some community policing, trying to get that initiative going, and had a constituent ask about, you know, updates on that, what Toby can send us, you know, what are the, what is the community policing program model, what are they going to do? You know, where they going, how's it going to work? Kind of what's, you know, any updates on it?
Okay.
Are they just going out in the community and walking the beat, or they're being involved in social activities, or really with this, with this community policing?
On that part, being, they are getting involved.
Right.
Um, they're still putting programs together, you know, for the communities and the neighborhoods and everything, but they're all, we have two, um, that's been going out and about in the neighborhoods and different, you know, events, also along with meetings with some other, uh, locals and all with concerns and all, putting ideas together with them, you know, and hearing input and everything. So they're, they're getting more involved in it, but they also have plans to do a lot more as far as, you know.
Some kind of framework of what, what the intent of the community policing is, and what are we going to do with it? Uh, pods, I know we had, um, code enforcement looking at pods, do we have any resolution or any traction?
Did not get back with him this week, um, but I will find out, get him to send an email out.
We did review the current, um, ordinance that's out there. Um, and basically there, if you've read it, it does like thirty days and it does permits and everything else. You can get an extension for another thirty days. It, it really, I mean, if you're trying to renovate your house and it takes six months.
I get it, right, that's fine.
You know, so it's, there's some.
There's other people that are.
Some things there about the idea of coming back with some text amendments to clean that up.
They're just sitting there, store, storage units, basically, in the front yards and.
But we did tell code enforcement to go after it.
Cool.
Because the other thing is if they do want a text amendment, we don't want anybody grandfathered.
Right.
Too, if you want something changed on that ordinance, or if it's looking at something, you know, send along any suggestions, or, you know, if you, if you want to move in that direction, I would encourage y'all to talk about that and give some guidance as to what you'd want to see in that, in that ordinance, so something could be brought back.
Do other cities address them?
I can scan that one page, I mean, it's literally one page that's dealing with kind of cargo storage.
And I got it.
And send that to y'all.
You know, is, is there any other city has any ordinances on pods, or, I mean, I can do the homework.
Yeah, there are, if you, if you.
I can do the homework and do it all, but I.
No, I did, I mean, I did, I, yeah, they're, they're all different. I've done the same, I've Googled just to kind of look around and see what people are doing.
Let's see what they're doing and write an ordinance and submit it to P and Z, and we'll, you know, approve it.
Well, I, I guess what I'm, what I'm asking, Doug, is to tell us, what do you want in that?
No pod sto, no, no long, thirty-day pods in front of their house.
Do you want thirty days? Do you want no storage? Do you want, just give us a little guidance here as to what you?
I think they're useful. Yeah, they're useful, they're just not, there's one that's been on Highland Street for a year, two years.
Yeah, so, I mean, I guess that's what I'm asking, it's like, what, what is reasonable? Do you want them to be allowed for?
Thirty days and then permitted.
Thirty days and then?
Re-renewed, and what, what do other cities do?
Well, it's, 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 I mean, you could Google it, every city does something different. So some of them don't have nothing, some of them have thirty days.
Or ninety, you know, yeah.
Six months, some of them say you can have them if you're.
Yeah, one of the things I think was talked about, you know, as long as they have a permit, you know, moving forward with that permit.
Yeah, possible.
Yeah.
Well, and I've seen some of them even have it where they allow them if they're stored in the backyard. So if you're in construction and you put it in the backyard where you can't see it, so that's the kind of stuff that, that, if I'm going to draft something, if they're going to draft something, whoever the case may be, we need to know, you want thirty days, we don't care where it is, do we want, I mean, there's no sense in drafting something, sending it to P and Z, getting it back to y'all, saying, oh, wait, we want this, this, and this, so just need some. I mean, you can email them, or if y'all want to have a conversation of what you, what you see, it's, you know.
Do you want to maybe send y'all a couple of questions, such as, you know, location of it? Do you want it in their driveway? Do you want it in the grass? Do you want it in the side yard, backyard?
One, one of the things was.
Thirty days, sixty days?
Front yard on pavement, concrete.
And I don't think pods will go off of the pavement or concrete, I don't think. I don't think they'll drop it in the grass if the pod company delivers.
I don't know, because they, yeah, they got to be able to get there and run that machine out there. It's got to be something where they won't sink.
Yeah, exactly, so, I don't think they go into the grass in the backyard, so.
But would, would a list of questions like that help kind of guide y'all and get some answers from you all?
Yes, sir.
Yep.
That'd be good, thank you. Anything else, Mr. Seal?
Thanks, thank you.
All right, anything, Mr. Hoffman?
Where are we on the, uh, pickleball bids?
Two weeks from last meeting. Yeah. Two weeks from last meeting.
Two more weeks.
Jason?
I think we're on soil samples.
Yeah. Yeah, so the first stage, uh, that we had to go through is to get soil boring for the pickleball court designers, so they know what the soil type is, and then they do their foundation design based off of that. Uh, the borings were taken last Thursday, I think they were last Thursday. Should have that report within a couple of weeks, and then we can get that out to the pickleball court designers to bid the foundation workout. So.
So it's in process?
It's in process.
Moving, as long as it's moving.
That's right.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Um.
Noise coming from buoys. I don't know if, if the PD's had any complaints, but I've been getting a lot of complaints, especially, uh, from about eleven to two in the morning, excessive base, more than anything.
That what?
Excessive base.
Oh, you sure it's them?
Nobody else is open.
They got a bus that rides around that blows the windows out, they got jeeps.
Yeah, but this, this is consistent, apparently, I mean, I'm, I'm not.
Because we've been up there, and, and officers have been going up there on a regular basis as well, starting to, you know, stay out there and watch. We did have a complaint a few weeks ago for the Mike, and come to find out that bus was parked down on that end down there, Blarin, and not taken up for him, but, um, I don't know, can't say it's him, can't say it's not, but I have not received any calls in the last few weeks. But we were getting to watch, and they, and like I said, they've been going up there trying to address it and all, keeping up on it.
Yeah, all right, as long as we're keeping up with it, that's good, um, I think that's it.
Is it coming from the church?
No.
I mean, I.
Residents.
Okay.
Anything else, Mr. Hoffman?
No.
Anything, Mr. Reed? Okay, only thing I had was going to be lights, see what our plan was, Mr. Seal brought that up, so I'm good.
Yes.
Thank you.
And, and as soon as Ronnie gets update on everything and all, some calls on six-oh-three and ninety, we'll get that out.
Okay, thank you.
Hey, Josh.
Yes, sir.
Let me see, did we get a letter from somebody?
About the trees?
Mm-hmm.
From Mr. John Omen?
Yes.
Court date is July fourteenth.
Yeah, I spoke with him today, he didn't necessarily want to bring anything up at the meeting, he just wanted to let the council know about it.
Staying on top of, they have everything, um.
I know nobody, nobody mayor than Mike, so.
Huh?
And no, nobody was mayor than you, so.
So.
So there's nothing, nothing's been reached, we, we plant, the trees that were planted were planted by whoever?
By whoever.
All right, I said no, so no remediation's been done.
Supposedly, whoever planted those trees went by the, what our ordinance says, if you remove a tree and this and that. You know, the thing is, he didn't have permission to remove these trees, they weren't his tree, they wasn't on his property to be removed. So, you know, I expect, my expectation is more than a twig out there.
They were dying, so.
Yeah, they, they, they're looking pretty rough.
And in that, they, they've got to keep them for a year.
Right.
And anytime in a year starts over and this and that, so.
Yeah.
But he's not been to court yet on this.
Temple.
All right, thank you.
We'll keep that updated as well.
All right, thank you, Mr. No Block, for bringing that up. Um, okay, public forum guest, Micah Tinkler, how you doing, sir? Step to the mic, please.
Thank you, Mike. All right, um, for those of you who may not know me, my name is Micah Tinkler. I am one of the Republican candidates for Mississippi House of Representatives for District one-twenty-two, which includes Bay St. Louis. So I made my note about your, about your insurance thing. All right, so, in brief, it was thirty-six years between Hurricane Camille and Katrina. It's been eighteen years since Hurricane Katrina. So if Mother Nature is following any kind of schedule, we've got eighteen years left. Now, our brethren in Louisiana have re-engineered their levees, built the one-point-one-billion-dollar mischued flood wall, hardened their barrier island, and then September of last year, they approved going forward with the Lake Pontchartrain flood barrier, which will direct hurricane storm surge to us. In the meantime, Mississippi has done what?
Stayed back in watch.
Allowed it.
Okay, so.
Start getting more water.
Corps of Engineers said there will be no negative impact from, from flood walls, they have it in writing.
Which, as opposed to the twenty-seventeen RAND report, which said?
Yeah.
Absolutely positively the opposite.
Oh, yeah, 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 I mean, it's crazy.
Um, on July thirteenth, at the American Legion in Waveland, from six-thirty to eight-thirty, I will be hosting a workshop, shielding the coast, cost-effective flood reduction strategies.
Thirteenth?
July thirteenth, it's a Thursday, six-thirty to eight-thirty PM. I've invited everybody in the Waveland City Council. The offer is open to you and anybody in the public who would want to come by. And listen, it will be things that we could actually do and things that I intend to pursue in the twenty-twenty-four legislative session in order to protect not just Hancock County, but eventually the entire Gulf Coast.
Okay, yes.
Thank you very much for that.
The Corps, the Corps of Engineer will come in and build levees for us. LODs, we, we fought with them for three or four years after Katrina. There's, there's studies, there's maps, I mean, we, there's, everything's out there, they'll come build levees for us. Ring levee systems, they'll come do it. Once they build them, we have to maintain them. Um, but yeah, it's, there's studies, there's drawings, there's, all that's done. Just the citizenry's, um, you know, do you want to put levees on the beach? And do you want to put levees around every neighborhood? How do you?
Not.
LODs, right? I mean, it's, it's studies.
Not levees.
Yeah.
Not levees is, is, is what I'm looking at, right?
But yeah, there's a lot of studies after Katrina that we went through with LODs.
Correct, there were, there was hardening the barrier islands, there were a couple of other.
Putting a floodgate in the Bay of St. Louis, like in Nether, the Netherlands, or where the hell is that at? Big flood, somewhere, there's a big floodgate in some, some Amsterdam or somewhere.
What was your location again?
It'll be at the American Legion Building on Waveland Avenue. I think it's five-oh-three Waveland Avenue, but don't quote me on the, on the address, but it, it's American Legion Post seventy-seven.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
And that was it for public forum, uh, engineers report, Mr. Canice.
Well, we've covered two topics already, um, and the first one was really my main item that I wanted to discuss. I know it wasn't really on my report, that kind of got added later. Um, so if there's any questions about anything else that we have, we can address those tonight.
Your first one being, uh, discussion, know what you mean, or not? Not that one, huh? Um, I guess you, I've seen you moving forward with, uh, having mitigation money for Ireland and stuff.
Yeah, we're.
Okay.
We're considering a couple of different options for those repairs. And I'm talking to the administration and Ronnie about what, what's going to be the most cost-effective out there, because it's a little worse than what I think anybody anticipated, uh, early on, so.
It's.
We don't have a final, final design on that yet, because we're still not sure exactly how far we need to go with it from the drainage standpoint.
Josh, I do believe, and I think everybody agrees, that Highland Street is our worst.
It, it is at this point.
Nightmare right now.
Um, yeah, and with the tides we've been having lately, it's been staying.
Out there on that yet, how bad it's washed out, do you just come in and put a big old thick overlay on? I don't know, you know, so, but it's, it stays underwater regular.
A lot lately, yes, so, okay, good deal.
It looks like, uh, we're moving forward with buyers in, uh, Washington. It looks like.
They're reapproving the reapproval, I mean, at the cabinet.
Finally have our overhead rate approved, so, uh, now we have to go back and resubmit our CNI contract with the new overhead rate, and then hopefully those will go a lot quicker since it's just changing some numbers.
Yeah.
So I do anticipate getting those out this week or early next week back to inside. And then, uh, I don't know, as far as the other, have you gotten a report back from GRPC on their meeting a couple of weeks ago?
I have not.
Okay.
Jason, we just commented, uh, Friday, we're opening up bids, uh.
Was that item, street repairs, is that this Friday?
No, hold on.
Is it for the DBST or something? What's that coming back?
I don't know, I had Friday morning.
No, we don't have any bid open.
Never mind then.
That's Friday off, go fishing.
I'm taking the day off, we're going fishing, yeah.
Yeah.
Go play golf.
Yeah, good luck there.
Weather don't look like it's going to be good for that, so.
Yeah.
No, it's not.
It's a little bumpy out there today.
Get some work done.
Yeah.
Sorry.
All right, um, any questions, Mr. Canice?
Um, the, uh, with all this heavy rain we've had today and last couple of days, how is, um, uh, Estorbrook?
Estorbrook, Estorbrook is in pretty good shape. I mean, we had, the way the slope worked out on there was able to drain better. Um, there are some areas on St. John that because of four inches of rain today and four inches of rain yesterday, it's taken longer to, to drain off. Um, I will say on Monday afternoon and Sunday afternoon, it was bone dry. Um, I will say on Monday afternoon and Sunday afternoon, it was bone dry, um, so we aren't seeing any water that's standing, you know, for long periods of time, but uh, with the amount of rain that we had in such a short time, the contractor did go out and make some adjustments, there's some pipe that he changed out. Um, so I think, looking at the slope, then I think that's about as flat and as as good as we're gonna get over there, so. But there's no water in the street, there's no water in the yard, there's no water in the houses, so. Prefer water to be in the ditch a little bit, as opposed to anywhere else.
I'm agreeing.
The other option is, we could've put in a pump station and pump it somewhere else, but.
You did, today looked pretty good for the most part.
That was pretty torrential rain.
Yeah.
And last night.
Last night was.
Again, the ditches, they flowing, it's getting it out. Getting it out as fast as we want, no, it never does, but it is moving and, um. We still had anybody with houses through there, had any, any problems at all, um, looked real good up on Sam and M's Inn on Estorbrook over there. That's one of the ones always worried about over on that street in that area, so it did, it looked very good. Again, there's probably some little knickknacks here and there, it needs to be done, but for the most part, it, you know, flows as well.
Ronnie did call me and told me that, uh, we're gonna take over basically the, uh, habitat, the detention ponds and stuff.
He, he, he is going in, you know, again, that's, I don't know what the agreement was.
Back whenever, if there was an agreement when they built all that, who was supposed to maintain the ponds, you know, and all this, the drainage and everything through there. Ronnie thinks, you know, look, it's gotta be done, um, a lot of that is possibly could cause back up over on Estorbrook side and everything, you know, off of what is that, Seals, a little cut through road right there, a lot of that has been a problem over there and all. He's right now off, uh, what is that, Union Street down there, that, the, the, um, the pond over there. He's in there right now, had to get out of there today with all the rain and everything, but he's in the process of that one there. He'll move over, I think that, I think it's two of them, one on the next street, he'll catch those two there, then when he gets through with that, he'll go back over to the high school, different area, same scenario, back behind, um, North Bay Elementary School, he did the middle school during spring break, he'll go back over and catch North Bay Elementary over there, the back of it, that holding pond there as well and get it cleaned out as well.
I'm, I, I think it's good because, uh, eventually it's gonna fall back on us anyway.
Well, look, it's been, uh, you know, eighteen years, sixteen, fifteen, whatever they built it, I don't think they've ever touched it. You know, somebody had to come in and do it, uh, we've sent letters and all that, to know, nothing come out of them, so. Ronnie just went in and gone and take the, take it over and everything.
Good deal.
Good deal.
Thank you. Alright, anything else, Mr. Canici?
Jason, when will they start on the ARPA stuff, phase one?
Fourth of July, week after.
About the second week of July.
So, after our next meeting, basically.
Yeah, we should have a notice to proceed in a, in a week or so. And that way we'll have a few.
Appreciate it, anything else for us?
That's it, Fuel Dock Project came in under budget, so I would like to mention that.
Whoa, we only hear that too often, do we?
That's why I'm mentioning it.
Want to write it down? Put that part in the minutes?
Note it. Alright, thank you.
Say the deductive change order?
Yeah.
City Clerk's report.
How much was it, Jason?
On what?
Okay, good.
That was titled, right? Yeah, that's titled, right.
You ready, Mr. Esso?
Yes, sir.
Alright, year of the date, twenty twenty-three financials.
So, just wanted to take some time to kinda just review with y'all where we are at as of end of May on our financials. Um, so basically eight months into the year, you're basically sixty-seven percent, it's kinda where we should be, especially looking at expenses. Um, so that's kind of the target number, as you start looking at stuff, so. Uh, summary wise, we're at eighty-two percent of our revenues collected, which is nine point five million dollars. And on expenses, we're at sixty-nine percent total for seven point seven million spent. Um, on the revenue side, if you look at it from taxes, we're at ninety-five percent. Sales tax, sixty-nine percent, at one point five million. Gaming, sixty-seven percent, one point seven. Licensing and permits, eighty-seven percent for nine hundred thirty-three, that's your franchise taxes, as well as permits in the building department, things like that. Um, and then court, sixty-seven percent at eighty-one thousand. So, if you're looking at your revenues, we're sixty-seven plus, so our big ones, you know, our aflorm taxes that are collected, sales tax, gaming, everything's right where it needs to be, uh, so we don't anticipate any shortfalls on revenue. So I think that's a, something to celebrate.
You know, one of the things, don't mean to interrupt and all, but one of, one of the good things is our gaming is about where we was hoping for, we moved that out, um. You know, we already moved the four hundred thousand out, so we hope to continue to keep where we were, you know, expected.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Pretty close to target.
Yeah.
Good.
So moving on to expenses, just kinda looking at departments, city council, you guys are at sixty-four percent. Courts at fifty-nine, administration's at eighty-three, one reason for that is our insurance came in a little higher, um, so we're a little ahead there. Permits at fifty-nine, again, building department type of stuff, the police are at sixty-seven, fires at sixty-seven. Streets, which is public works, fifty-three percent, uh, again, the major savings there is on that, uh, just staffing. So our salaries, expenses, and it's high. Um, parks and maintenance, we're at sixty-eight percent. Um, on there, the salary part's down, but we've done some capital with the baseball fields and trashcans and stuff, uh, so that kinda brings it up a tad. We're still right in line where we should be. And finally, the transfers and others, uh, that's means money that's moving out of the general fund into other stuff, is that ninety-eight percent? That's one point one million, that includes the four hundred thousand the mayor just referenced from, uh, the general fund to the emergency fund, um, based off of what we did with the gaming, anticipating some little increased revenues. Overall, again, if you look at your, you know, the operating expenses from the general fund, things are where they should be uh, in the eight months, so nothing that's throwing up any alarms or anything like that. Uh, when I move on to municipal reserve, uh, grand income is at one point six million, big chunk of that is Gulf Coast Restoration Fund for one million. Um, reimbursements, dealing with the depot. The boat launch on six oh three was, uh, five hundred thirty-one thousand, M Dot Highway ninety project, which was a couple of years ago, we went and recovered some money. That was about sixty-one thousand. Um, I think that was from a conversation you were having with M Dot, and they said, hey, I think we might have some extra cash here, but Jason found us sixty-one.
So where is that money?
That's in your reserve fund.
In a reserve.
It went back right into there.
In the emergency reserve?
No, in the regular municipal reserve, that's where it was project money, it went back into it. Um, total expenses paid out of that was five hundred seventy-four on projects, fund balance, after the expected reimbursement, says that five hundred eighty-one thousand. Uh, then we had the municipal reserve special that was set up for the police station, um, the revenues for that is eight hundred forty-one thousand. We've spent right at three million, um, we do anticipate more obviously revenue coming in from, uh, the Gulf Coast Restoration Funds from the grant from last summer, as well as the grant from this year, um, so we're doing paperwork and everything with with that. So we'll be submitting the receipts, uh, but do anticipate hopefully getting that before fiscal year end, if not, it'll be carried into the next fiscal year for reimbursement. Uh, our emergency fund, which was new, again, it, the transfer in revenue was the four hundred thousand out of general fund. For federal projects, uh, revenues, five hundred sixty-eight thousand, that's coming from Zeta, from FEMA. Uh, we've only spent seventy-five thousand, so again, that was getting reimbursed for all the projects, we are working with FEMA regularly to get other reimbursements. We still have several projects in the millions on that, um, again, it's, it's just a slower process for reimbursement from FEMA compared to Gulf Coast Restoration Fund and other grants. Um, the modernization use tax, which we refer to as internet sales, um, three hundred and thirty-five thousand has come in so far this year. We get two installments, so we're anticipating a second installment in July for about the same amount, um, and that's what's budgeted. Uh, we spent a hundred and fifty-six thousand, a hundred of that is the bond payment for twenty twenty was transferred, uh, to assist on that. That fund balance is six hundred and ninety-five thousand. Uh, county road and bridge fund, revenues are at three hundred and fifty-five thousand. Um, so it's right where we anticipated it, expenses at a hundred and eighty-two thousand, big chunk of the expenses is a transfer from that hundred thousand to the general fund, um, for, um, operating expenses, things that go with public works on roads and, uh, drainage. That fund balance is at six eighty-seven as well. Uh, utility operating fund, again, right at sixty-seven percent, uh, run, generating three point three million dollars in revenue. Um, expenses were at seventy-six percent, so things that are a little bit higher there, number one, the insurance is about thirty-nine thousand over budget uh, compared to what we originally thought. Audit fees were a hundred percent paid for the year, so they're ahead of, you know, ahead of being payment, that's, those are lump sums. Um, we also had lift station and equipment repairs and maintenance that are higher than expected. Um, the cost of gas that we, uh, sell was higher, obviously, we talked about that at a few meetings. Um, the cost of new parts for the water and gas meters significantly, and that's what we've pulled P O's and, cuz they're like eighty-four weeks out or something.
Has the gas rate been adjusted to cover the cost?
Yeah, we.
We have, we're, we're still at that point to where we was, we have not adjusted, but.
So how much are we making on our gas sales?
This last month was around six dollars, this month, uh, in between four and five dollars, I had to pull those numbers. That's above and beyond, what we took and take our gas costs, had about fifty thousand dollars in expenses, a fixed number, that's each month, that comes for um, salaries and other things throughout, we had fifty thousand dollars to that amount, and then figure out what we got. So right now, last few months, we probably average close to six dollars a thousand that we sell. What is that magic number, can't tell you.
But y'all did increase the rates for.
Right.
For gas, when, when the rates were going up like that, y'all increased them, and we've, we've been holding them there, cuz it started coming down, but they peaked back up again.
Yes, we thought we was gonna be able to reduce it down to get maybe back down to that fourteen to fifteen dollar range, but the last two months, it's going back up some.
So the, the gas prices are administrative change, y'all can do that at any time.
Yes.
Council does not approve gas price changes, y'all can, y'all can chase the rate all, you know, as, as you need to, so. You see the rates moving, you can chase them as much as you want, we do not have to approve that.
Uh, the final expense that was significant, as y'all approved, y'all wanted to move four hundred thousand out of operating into capital maintenance. And that's what's kinda driving a, a negative when it comes to that fund right now.
I was wondering what that negative.
Yeah, that four hundred thousand moving out, we had so much cash out of there, y'all wanted to move it, sir?
Gas is self-sufficient, paying all its expenses.
Yes.
So you're not, you're not subsidizing it out of any other account.
No. No, there's no subsidizing on any accounts.
And again, we thought, we add that to it, and we, we're still trying to build, you know, we're talking about the new gas meters and all, you know, so we wanna make money. What that magic is, nu- number is, nobody can tell us, you know, how much profit you should make on anything, water, gas, but we do have to cover our costs and everything. And, and I think, you know, with this, again, we're, right now, we're probably in that four dollar range, we're making a little over four dollars per thousand cubic feet that we sell, last month, we was at, I think, maybe five or six, but before that, we we, we was a little higher than that, and we thought we was gonna be able to go down, and then all of a sudden, prices started going back up, so that's where we at now.
The utility capital maintenance fund, um, revenues are four hundred thousand, obviously, they'll, again, moving that four hundred thousand from operating into the capital fund, expenses one thirty-three, your fund balance there is six hundred and twenty thousand. Finally, the harbor, uh, revenues are at seventy-three percent of budget, six hundred sixty-four thousand in, from sale, from operating. Uh, again, most of that's attributed to increased sales and slips. And if, on expenses, we're at sixty-two percent, five hundred fourteen thousand with a net profit of one fifty, and that fund balance is right at four hundred thousand. So in financials, that you do see, if you remember, we transferred some money out and then transferred it back in for the loan payment, we put it back in that operating account. We didn't take that fund from there.
Gary, one other thing, if I can.
Operating is doing well.
On utilities, one of the expenses going up is gas, but we're also gonna see that with the increase of revenue in gas as well to offset that. You know, when we did budget, we didn't have the increase in that, I think we was at, I think we budgeted twelve dollars at the time per thousand. We're at sixteen now, because of the big increase, you know.
Well, I was expecting the gas to go up because the federal tax rate on, 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 uh, natural gas went way up a few months ago.
That's what it is. Yeah. Okay, so it, it did go up, so, so we'll continue to watch it and all, but, you know. It's showing in our revenue, if you, if you get your revenue expense count, look at the gas part, you can see, we're, we're pretty, we're about eighty percent on that for the year, so we're only gonna see, you know, increase in that as well.
Yeah.
And Mike, there was a, I don't know, for, for, almost forever, there was a Katrina, uh, account. And what, what did we do with that account? Uh, there was several dollars in it.
It was, it was leftover funds for Katrina.
Right.
It was something, but it was in, it was on the cash balances, and it's not on there.
If, uh, it was a separate account, didn't they?
For some reason, y'all closed that one.
I think we did.
A couple.
I think we closed that years ago.
When they were, for some reason, I thought.
I thought M L K Park we put it to, I thought, cuz I think you found out about it, so we could use it for M L K Park.
When we did that ninety-something thousand dollars. Closed out.
Cuz I think we looked and verified, made sure that it was, it was kinda just lingering out there, and it wasn't, I, I think y'all transferred.
Went for the ADA.
Think they gave. Yes, if I remember correctly.
Few years ago when we did away with that.
Did we ever get that from the county, that ten thousand from the county to put to us?
I think they sent something and said they weren't going to give it because there was some bid law stuff, if I remember correctly. Didn't, do you remember that, Mike, didn't they send a letter saying?
Y- yeah, we, uh.
I thought they would put that to the ADA too.
I, I think, I think they sent a.
We'll check on that again, but it was something to do with, they could only give it with the, if the bid laws were, you know, went out that way.
I think their attorney wouldn't.
We can do it with, at the sidewalks.
Because they did, yeah, they did bid it, uh.
You know, we might be able to get that to go towards the sidewalk part of it.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, alright, good. Check on that, somebody. Okay, any other discussion on that, Mr. Esso?
No, just overall, been trying to get an assessment of where y'all are today, I think in a very healthy position.
Good, good, so, that's good, appreciate it. Next thing is, uh, motion approved to Bay Saint Louis Dock of the Claims Number twenty-three dash oh two five, dated June twentieth twenty twenty-three, in the amount of one million, four hundred and sixty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents. Do we have a motion, motion, Mr. Seal?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman, any discussion on that? Vote to motion.
Aye.
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 Aye, passes five zero, thank you. Alright, consent agenda, items A through A D.
Um.
All those reports.
We'll talk about the air conditioning repair at the fire station first.
Okay, you'll pull that off, or?
Yeah, let's pull that off, and, uh, I just wanted to be explained a little.
Okay.
Yeah, J, is J and T the same?
Is what?
Uh, item J and item T, is that the same, uh?
Looks like it.
Or is it two?
Yep. We'll remove T.
Remove T. Yeah, yeah.
He did five hundred thousand back.
Remove T, and discussion.
Oh, let's see, it's, uh, shoot, I just took my.
The fire station.
Yes.
Okay, so we'll approve consent agenda with removing T and removing item F for further discussion. Do we have a motion? Motion, Mr. Seal?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman, any further discussion, vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, passes five zero, um, I'll let you go first, Mr. No Block, I have a few questions myself.
On the, I was looking at the repair, so, uh, I remember when we did that path thing, and they have this geothermal cooling and heating disaster. So, what are they actually doing that that's, how are they gonna bypass all this so that it works?
We're not bypassing. Evidently, this underground system has been I guess, yeah, contaminated, whatever you wanna say, as far as trash and all in the lines, not worked since day one, it was compromised for what they were told while it was being installed. Don't know if it was flushed all the way correctly back then, clean, you know, chemicals and all, everything treated, they don't know all that. So, right now, there's two to three pumps not working there, there's a whole bunch of fans and a whole bunch of, um, one, um, something, I don't know what it was, but I think it's eleven fans and something else. So that's all part of it, but the underground, what they're gonna do, they're gonna come in, they, they're gonna s- make sure that it's not compromised the way it's still getting the trash in the line, they'll do that by pressurizing everything and all this, and all. And go forward from that, so with that, if everything works out good, then we're, we're, this price here is gonna fix our system over there. Next scenario would be, it's compromised underground, then, you know, this is all underneath our building, the concrete and all this. So there's really no way in to go in and resolve that problem issue unless we tear all this out. The next hand thing would be is take and put a, a chiller on top of the building and everything, and use that system with this, so, the, the forty thousand dollars of repairs here, everything that's being done here, including the two pumps that's down for, for that system, is needed, even if that chiller goes in up top. So the forty thousand dollars is a must, no matter if the chiller's on top or underground and all that. So, the addition of that cost would be in the neighborhood of, the total, I think, was around a hundred and sixty thousand total, for the, a new chiller on the roof and everything. A new system doing away with this, complete new system, uh. A new system doing away with this, complete new system, um, you know, um, with the regular air conditioning and all that, would be in that one sixty to two hundred range, if we decide to go in, tear everything out, put a whole new split system, I think they call it, that type of system in, we would be looking at about two hundred thousand dollars, a hundred and sixty thousand in that neighborhood. So their belief is that they're hoping for the best when they go in, that they're hoping that it was just, you know, compromised in the beginning, never was clean, never was treated. Again, the coils and all this is going in, I think it's eleven fans, every coil has to be re-cleaned and everything, and one compressor, I think it is, it was the other thing that needed, plus some iron end filters and all that type of stuff and all, so that's what they're doing with this initial and all. And they'll pressurize and everything, make sure the whole, once they get the pumps and all, you know, the three pumps in, make sure that, that's not compromised. And then if it is, then we'll have to move forward on phase two.
Okay, so, that'd be nut budget.
Man, look, it, this, I don't know, this is just the worst, I don't know, I just never seen anything like.
It's a green building.
Yeah.
And, and, and look, we've had two people over there look at our windows in there, Mike has brought in a guy from, uh, we had on the police department, and I think someone else, the police department guy wouldn't even touch it. You know, the windows and, you know.
I think it was A one.
They're not putting that kind in the police department, are they?
If it is, they're in the right way. But no, we have working windows in the police department and everything.
No, I'm talking about that unit, they're not putting that kind of unit.
No, we have regular air conditioners, sitting on the side, I think it's five of them. Five, I don't know what size they are, we got regular units in over there, nope.
Because reading that final assessment, it sounds like we're gonna be putting the chiller on the roof.
We hope not.
Should we just move that direction? Huh? Should we just move that direction and just convert the whole system now?
Well, that, that's what we talked to them, you know, um. They saying this is a very good thing, you know, unit, the way it's set up and everything, just that the unit was compromised underground and, and they feel like, even if we had to put a chiller in up top, that that is the best scenario for it.
Okay.
Yeah, because, you know, look, my thing is, take, put a whole new unit in, just like, you know, we have at the police department, whatever, with regular units that anybody can come and work on, that's one of the things here, you know, not a lot of people can work on these units. And, and especially the ones that got the underground and all this, so, but their recommendation was to, to move forward with this, and they still recommend moving forward with a chiller on the roof instead of a whole new system, so.
So these. How much is the chiller, one sixty?
I think the total package would be one sixty, there's forty plus, like, one twenty or something for the chiller, is what we.
Man, I would probably just have that ready for the budget.
Yeah.
Be looking that way.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so, okay.
But it, you know, and, and again, this, I think this is the first time we've really had someone come out and evaluate the whole system and all, and, and we're gonna knock on wood and all, once we get this taken care of and all, we're gonna move the six oh three to that fire station out there.
Yeah, that's another thing, is there some kind of thing to clean outside of the police, the fire department?
Yeah.
It just looks dingy.
They'll get somebody to come in, pressure wash and everything, clean it up.
I don't know if it needs pressure washing or repainting or, or whatever it is, it just looks.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Just some love, keep around.
Fire department too.
Yeah.
Yeah, and still got a few lights out around it too, that fire station.
Are they still out?
Two on the poles are working, three or four still out, and there's still four or five on the building out, on fire station.
Yeah, that was all supposed to be replaced, evidently not.
Yeah, maybe just get some price on some L E D fixtures or something, got that, they have bulbs inside of them still.
Yeah.
But yeah, it's, still dark there. Okay, so, motion to authorize the quote from mechanical services, H VAC request totaling forty thousand, five hundred dollars, and to use the twenty twenty bond funds for this capital expense, motion, Mr. Seal, if you have a second?
Second.
Second, Mr. Noblock, any further discussion, vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, passes five zero, thank you. When do you think they're gonna start, because I know they've been in kind of, uh?
The A C, very soon.
Okay, good.
Yes.
Very soon.
Busy season.
The, one of the good things, they, one of the things they did say, that most of these parts and all the fans, the compressor and these pu- you know, pumps and all, they're in stock.
I can buy them off the internet.
Yeah.
I priced them out today. Pumps are cheap.
Good deal.
Yeah.
Motors are cheap, nine hundred dollars a motor, twenty-three hundred dollars for a complete motor pump.
All right, next up is Minnesota. Minnesota approval from the first regular meeting, June sixth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion, no changes again.
Motion Seal, second Hoffman, any further discussion, vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, five, passes five zero, thank you. Attorney's report, uh, motion to approve the resolution of the city council, based in St. Louis, specifically adopting redistricting certified for the redistricting of the city's council's wards following the twenty twenty census. Motion Seal?
Second.
Second, Mr. Reed, uh, any further discussion on that?
Let's just say that we're gonna follow the rules, right? Right, I mean, just like, okay, we've got rules.
Yep.
Got to follow.
Yep, okay, vote to motion?
Aye.
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 Aye, passes five zero, thank you. If that's it, we'll have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Motion to adjourn, Mr. Reed?
Second.
Second, Mr. Hoffman, any further discussion, vote to motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Five zero.